We actually have a couple of minutes prior to.
Just a note for everyone tonight, we are probably not on the budget until over six thirty ish or so. That would be my target to move on the committee of the whole and then as we typically will have the village board meeting agenda after that. Did you all hear that? Okay. But that, Jesse.
All right. Thank you very much. This evening, we are convening as the committee of the whole to walk through the draft. Twenty twenty five executive budget that is being proposed. If I can get, there we go. Already, there were three primary goals in the crafting of the twenty twenty five executive budget. Those three primary goals were mitigating the impact of the fire and EMS referendum. We wanted to continue to support village operations, amenities and infrastructure. And finally, we wanted the twenty twenty five executive budget to result in a reasonable portion of the overall tax bill. Because as you know, this budget is funded through tax levy, which is the primary source of revenue. That tax levy that is collected translates into a tax rate and that it shows up on the tax bill. So again, we are looking at establishing a budget that would be responsible to the taxpayers. Our budget process timeline, just to walk through very quickly. We started actually back in June, the department heads were provided budget instructions. This is a new start date. This is actually about a month or so early, if you will. Held a budget one oh one information session with the board, just walking through the outside influences that need to be considered. The tax, how tax levy limits work, how the expenditure restraint program works, what kind of outside influences play into the crafting of the budget. Then we go through staffing requests were due, the budgets themselves from each of the departments were due. And then we talked about or had internal discussions. One new facet to the budget process was at a management team meeting. I had, I requested each of the department heads to stand up and walk through their budget. What were the requests? What were the needs? What were the wants? How does that impact the overall budget? In itself, but also what was their process within their department to come up with their requested budgets? Just in an effort to help educate various departments, how the process or the functions that are funded in each of the different departments? And how each department approaches their individual budgets? That said, we finalized requested budgets into a documents that could be presented to committees, which they were. Then we start seeing some of these outside forces. These blue boxes here are some of those outside forces being the levy limit worksheet. We need to make sure we fill that out. So we know what our target is, what can we collect with regards to tax levy? Then we start getting information from the state of Wisconsin being shared revenue preliminary numbers. Expenditure restraint and computer aid, shared revenue numbers. We get our final health insurance rates. In the meantime, the executive budget is completed with some of these items still estimated and outstanding. And published out to the village board for review. Couple of weeks later, as we still have incoming information goes, tonight, we're here workshop number one, the presentation and review of the executive budget with committee the whole. We have one secondary workshop scheduled for next week if needed. But then we still have a couple of these items. These are significant revenue items that are still coming in yet. And will have a small impact on the budget. That said, November fourth, a public hearing date, I would put out there for the board to consider. If there is no reason to hold over action, I would offer that the board could in fact take action on the budget and establish the tax rate that same evening. That said, that would provide additional time for staff to finalize that levy and the tax rate data. Have it proofed and sent out to the printer because no later than December fifth, the tax bills, tax bills must be mailed. Quick overview of the twenty twenty five budget, really by program area. The general fund, the general fund is the largest portion of the village budget. This is everything from village board, clerk's office, finance department, administration, legal, police department, public works, park and rec administration. And so forth. So it is the largest and most extensive part of our village budget. That said, it is going up about seven and three quarter percent, but the levy being funded or required by the general fund is actually dropping a bit. That is because we are anticipating another good year of interest earnings. But also another solid year of permit revenues. Now, I want to be very clear, we are abundantly cautious with regards to programming any sort of revenue. Whether it's service fees, whether it is permit fees, whether it is interest earnings, we are very, very cautious and overly conservative. On purpose. That being said, we still anticipate some upticks in those areas. And therefore, the levy support for the general fund is actually dropping very slightly. Our special revenue funds, these are those standalone unique funds, being the library, the fire department. Some of the park and rec, the programming and aquatics type of funds where they have their own sets of user fees or activity fees that come in. And support either the entirety of the fund or the vast majority of the fund along with some tax levy. Now, these numbers do look a bit gaudy, if you will, at a one hundred and sixteen point eight percent uptick in the levy required. That is actually the fire and EMS referendum tax dollars coming into the fire department budget. What we are seeing is that the village of Grafton is going to be acting as the finance arm for the Ozaki Central Fire Department for twenty twenty five. Under a memorandum of understanding to provide that service. Therefore, we have to show in our budget how that's going to play out. But the fact remains that Grafton did have a successful fire EMS referendum. And therefore, that, all of that revenue specific to the fire EMS is coming into that particular fund under our special revenues. Program area. So that is why that is very significantly disproportionate to the other percentages you see on the page. Debt funds, our levy required is going up a bit, but that's simply as debt matures. We have outstanding debt that we are continuing to pay off. It is structured to the extent that it is affordable to the village. We have purposely done that. We review it regularly for refinancing options. We don't have any currently. That being said, we have a slight uptick with the levy support. To make sure that debt service is in fact covered as a part of the budget. Capital improvement funds, this is equipment and projects. You see a slight dip here and I will be speaking to that in greater detail later. This with my presentation, but the big portion of this is due to the fact that the twenty twenty five executive budget. Calls for a road program that does not require borrowing. It does not require tax levy supported borrowing. And that's pretty significant because that was a message that was loud and clear throughout the course of the capital planning process this spring. But also harkening back to last fall's budget workshops where the village had been borrowing for roads. That were tax levy supported debt. This budget does not call for any tax levy supported debt. It does however, call for utility supported debt because there are various projects, including a portion of road under the utility. And again, I will speak to that in greater detail later in my presentation. The fiduciary fund remains unchanged and the proprietary funds being the utilities. You'll notice no levy there. That is all user fee funded and those are adjusting accordingly based upon their budget request. So overall, the total tax levy is going up to about ten point five, about eighteen point two three percent. That is a combination of the tax levy being collected through the referendum. But also our net new construction adjustment that we'd be taking as well. And I'll again, I'll be speaking to that a little bit more in greater detail later on. So as part of the requested budgets from the departments, there were some staffing requests. The police department requested, made a request for two additional patrol officers. With that came, you know, training expenses, equipment expenses and what have you. A part-time building inspector was requested through community development. And an administrative assistant was requested by the utility. So to walk through what the requested is reflected as within the executive budget, there was a change. Working from bottom up, the two unchanged administrative assistant for the utility. I did carry that forward, that request forward into my executive budget. It would be funded by the utility and not by tax levy. The part-time building inspector would be funded through a combination of tax levy and permit fee revenues as well as a reduction of our contracted staff. Currently, the village of Grafton has three contracted building inspectors. Unfortunately, their schedule is getting a little bit more and more disjointed and we need that consistent coverage. Therefore, we are looking to fund a part-time building inspector position. And then a mirror image of the twenty twenty four budget, this year's current budget. Instead of two patrol officers, I installed again, mirroring the twenty twenty four budget that is currently in place. The funding for a second school resource officer, subject to an updated cost share agreement. And then funding to backfill the position of the patrol officer. Right now, we currently have a patrol officer who is qualified to fill that second school resource officer spot. And with that transition, if when were to occur, the patrol officer vacancy would then be funded as a backfill position. That being said, there is flexibility here within the budget to talk about those particular positions or any one of these three positions. And staff is here this evening to speak to in greater detail the justification thereof.
Very good. At this point in time, I asked Jesse to kind of just take a little break here. And for the board to be able to discuss the staffing positions. As we all know, staffing is our most critical asset that we have out there and they have good people. You pay them well, they stick around and they provide services. So my question to the board here is one by one, your look at each one of the positions that there's consensus. If this is a good move for us to take whether or budgeting. So any, any comments here would be greatly appreciated. I will note that in meetings with the school district, the school district said at this point in time, they are not. Not interested in a second resource officer at this point in time. Again, we'll have further discussions with them in January. But at this point in time, they've pretty much said don't correct.
Correct.
So let's talk about the patrol officer, school resource officer. I know some folks are like to comment on this. Nice uncomfortable silence when we do that. So Amy, I know you want to talk about this.
All right. Well, I'm glad to see that the second school resource officer is on the budget, but honestly, I'm not holding my breath on that. Which is a shame because most of the time that our current resource officer is spending is at the high school. And not much time, this time is being allocated to John Long, hardly any to the grade schools, not to mention the Kokea schools. In fact, there was a situation last week at John Long Middle School where they had to call. The resource officer because a young student was out of control. Flipping tables over in the conference room, computers flying, totally out of control. They had to call the school resource officer and he was in the middle of a situation at the high school. Now, things like that happen on a regular basis? No, but. It's important that we get another school resource officer in there to make those connections at that younger age. So that they can try to connect with those, those children. So I'm very much in favor of a second school resource officer. In regards to staffing for the police department, page one oh one shows professional staff. Five, I'm confused. I think it should be four. I understand Melinda's position is not going to be filled.
Sure, I can clarify that. Those are the positions that are set forth on the organizational chart. Whether they are funded or not, that's a different part of the budget. That piece right there just shows what the positions are on the organizational chart currently.
Calls for services have gone up slightly, but more so is the amount of time that are being spent on these calls for services. Going up from average of twenty three minutes to high up to thirty five minutes for each call. Also, our average response times have gone up from one point five seven to an estimated three point three six. Uniform patrol sergeants or officers are considered the backbone of our community and our policing. Most service calls take two officers. So that's two officers off of the streets. Now, there are two sergeants who can assist with control, but we can't keep pulling them off to the other. They have many more responsibilities. And remember, chief has a shipment on that he had to adhere to. So. There has been no staff hired for the police department since two thousand and I just feel that's poor planning on the village. No additional sworn or just since two thousand. You look at a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars in overtime, that's actually equal to one officer. That would take a big dent out of that. So although the officers. Like the additional dollars that they get for overtime, it's just taking a toll on the health wise and they're more prone to injury. And that in the long run takes a toll on all of our resources as a community. We're down three, but really we're down five right now because I believe there's two officers still in the training. Will there ever be a time that we're fully staffed? I don't know. I mean, between PTO, sick time, vacation, training, someone's continuously off. The chief is doing a great job looking to the future. And our future shows Grafton exploding with development and with development comes more people. Right now, I feel the apartment's going backwards. I would ask that we please put on a future agenda or future consideration adding additional staffing to the police department. Thank you.
I agree with Amy's comments, but I would like to make one additional comment too. That has to do with the second school resource officer. I do believe that we do need one, however, under the current contract. I mean, we can't hire a second one under, under those terms. I mean, we have to get the school to come to the table. To revisit the contract and renegotiate that contract. So it's fair to both parts.
I think part of the challenge that I see in the police department is that. A lot of our, even if we were fully staffed at this point in time, which we haven't quite put some time during. I think that part of the challenge that we do have is that we have a considerable increase in the amount of unscheduled absences. And again, I want to be real careful. I say this, but basically when an officer is unable to work his shift, it's an unscheduled absence. And whether that is as a result of tired, being sick, family issues, certain medical issues. I would, I would like to see we, you know, certainly right now, we have had an open SRO position open since July, correct Jesse?
Correct.
So we've got an open SRO position open since July. We haven't filled it. I would like to see that SRO position right now filled with patrol officer. Until the school district paints up their mind, whether or not they feel it's important to have an SRO. At least at that point in time, we can have more, potentially have more boots on the ground to be able to deal with those issues potentially. Now, I'm going to look at you, Eric, at you and Jeff to be able to take potentially another FTE, another full-time equivalent. And utilize that to plug in where we do have folks who may be unscheduled or off. And maybe be able to cut back on the amount of time that folks are being moved into overtime. Already had a twelve hour shift. We put them into a sixteen hour shift with eight hours off. I'm concerned about that. So I would be all forward picking the SRO officer and saying, let's convert it to a patrol officer. Just might make sense work. So I don't know how everybody feels about that, Jesse.
If I may, having, having put together the budget, I can tell you rough math. And I'm sure Paul can verify this as well. But if you look at the funding we have allocated under the executive budget proposal for that second SRO and then the patrol officer backfill. If you take that funding and reallocate it strictly to a patrol officer. It would frankly be a wash within the budget that it is affordable to swap out those two. For a one regular full-time patrol officer that is doable within the confines of the budget.
Sure. So I'm in agreement that I think the second SRO is a good idea. I think it's. Good for middle school, the grade school, the private schools. And I think that they should be altered. I think we're in the past. But again, like you, I am not holding my breath about the school coming to the table. To not only discuss the new position, but to try and renegotiate the first position. If you don't really talk to us, that first position just keeps going as it is where they're paying only a third of the cost of that officer. And what I hear you saying though, is that now you would like to put an additional, you would like to hire an additional patrol officer. So we would go from twenty to sworn officers slash people because we do have a K nine. That can say that's. So you would want to increase that to twenty three is what I'm hearing. Was the thought that that extra patrol officer would, would be able to handle, you know, would be maybe, maybe somebody who would go to the schools. But haven't we now given them exactly what they wanted with, with another officer and they're not paying?
Well, let me be clear. This board has stated very clearly that unless we get additional reimbursement. From the school board, we're not interested in moving forward on the second SRO. And frankly, that message was communicated to the, to Mr. Nada and to Mr. Nelson. That, you know, certainly we are looking for an increase. I want to be very clear that I'm not saying that I take that person and put him into a second SRO position. If, for example, school board comes through with an acceptable reimbursement for both of our SRO officers. I think that at that point in time, we can look at additional funding sources. Being funded through the school and perhaps being shared by the village. But right now, we've got an open position. You know, I think it's probably a good idea to move into patrol. Again, if the school feels they need a second SRO, we would get into negotiation with them on that visa. I don't know if that makes sense.
It does, but again, we haven't even been able to come to an agreement, the board. On trying to give the school a notice about how you would like to renegotiate the first person. So, you know, I feel like now we're like backwards.
No, I don't think we're backwards Lisa. I disagree with that. And again.
Disagree.
I think we're going to disagree on that because I think we're still in a position negotiating with the school. Certainly, we're hoping this meeting in January will bring forth truthful things. However, I think we're at a point in April that we don't need to make a decision, April to make a decision on what we. But right now, I think for the benefit of the community, I think the benefit of the community is to have an extra patrol officer who indicates. That one of our SROs is tied up and we need somebody else at the place that's at, at the school. At least we have another resource out there who may be filling in for somebody who's out sick or who's working a sixteen hour shift. We at least have another resource that could be used. And again, it's not everything you guys want, but it's another body that we can put in at the trolling.
And then so if we would authorize that, we would still be down. You know, four slash six people. We're down three people now. So would you say, Jesse?
I believe so. We've got. One coming out of training shortly, one resigned. One left for the Ozaki Sheriff's Department. So either way, yes, we are down right now, but that is all part of a hiring and hiring process and field training process. This is talking about bolstering the ranks, adding either. Option one in the executive budget, adding a second school resource officer, subject to an updated agreement. And then backfilling the patrol officer position. So the patrol squad would be back to full strength per se. But adding that resource officer or what could occur. Because if you were to combine that's the allocation for the second school resource officer. Plus the backfill of the patrol position, if you were to combine that. A standalone patrol officer could be added to the ranks. So that's a couple of options.
Talk about the second SRO or budgeted it. And frankly, the school district is not. They absolutely said they're not interested at this point in time. So I think we have to kind of fisher cut bait and say like, okay, you don't want a second. You don't want the second SRO. I think we have that position open here right now.
It is.
I would, the SRO is open, but I would.
Correct.
Write my recommendation for. Get another more boot on the ground, get a couple more boots on the ground. And that's better than being short and waiting for the school districts to tell us that, yeah, we're ready for the SRO. If that's the fact, that'll be good. We certainly can negotiate that with the school board for, for future.
To substitute. The new officer for the spot that the school will negotiate with us. And hopefully in fill that, not to mention the other three that we have open.
That, that's, that's a big thing. I would see that both in the fire and the department. That we have holding positions and you know, I'm going to be bullish and say that our executive team and our hiring team were out there in the public right now. That they're going to get it done. Short of creating a new police officer, which they're very tight nationwide, right Eric? Definitely so. Okay. So are we in agreement on that? Does that work well with everybody?
Just making sure I understand the consensus of the board for the, the budget update. We would combine the allocations for the second school resource officer and the backfill of the patrol position. Combine that to simply create a new additional patrol officer. Making sure I understand the consensus of the board. Okay. We will make that change.
That's the first issue.
Could I ask one question about?
Just one.
Okay. So I did know that folks, I think we had mentioned that there was the police support specialists went up to five. When we talk about that and we get to that for.
That, that is simply a position on the org chart. It is not funded to be filled in this budget. It is simply a position that is on the org chart. It is, it is not funded.
Okay. So right now, we're going to stay at four.
Correct. That is the way the budget is written. Yes.
I think when we filled that last position, the police department gave of that. That non sworn.
They, they left it vacant. They didn't give it up. It didn't come off of the organizational chart. It is left unfilled. And it remains unfilled in the twenty twenty five budget proposal.
Okay. Yes, Jim.
You know, I've stayed out of this, but I can tell you this because I'm an employee at the school and the village. The primary objective at the school is the safety. Of the students and the staff. So what you're proposing. Sounds like a step in the right direction.
Thank you. I think so. We want to make sure that our, not just. And the students are safe, that everybody here is safe, having an extra, extra boot, pair of boots on the ground. Okay. Thank you. All right. So part-time building inspector, any discussion on that, given that that's going to be taken care of by levy and by. By permits increases.
And a reduction in contracted staff. So we've reduced the contracted numbers. We do see permit revenues and tax levy funding this position very well. Especially considering later this evening, the village board will be taking up the, the agreement, the building inspection agreement with Sockville. Sockville has approved that. That will increase revenues coming from Sockville.
And frankly, we are building quite a silk sock though. I know that we're looking at creating staff, creative staffing, potentially creative staffing methods to get that path line person. Any questions at all? Consensus broken? Seen a lot of nodding. That's, that's good. All right. Lastly, assistant, assistant administrator, assistant. Not accompanied by a tax levy funded by utility.
Correct. This, this would be a new position created within the utility shared between water and wastewater. To provide administrative assistance within the utility, obviously. That being said, there are a lot of federal and state mandates that require us to report. All different types of data on a regular basis. Moreover, this position would provide a front office presence as there are contractors coming and going from the utility. Not only for utility plant projects, but also waste haulers. And this person would be able to help check them in and out. And it's a layer of security, if you will, from that aspect, just being able to in essence, watch the front, so to speak. That being said, Assistant Director Grease has put forth a justification that was submitted to the budget team. We took a long, hard look at it and asked plenty of hard questions. And that being said, it really is incumbent upon this executive budget to provide that administrative support. So Director Grease can focus more on the day-to-day management of the utility and its staff. And longer range planning efforts, whereas the day-to-day minutia could be handled by this administrative assistant. That being said, Director Thomas, Assistant Director Grease are here this evening to speak more to it. But providing that 10,000 foot, foot look level. I am comfortable with having it in the executive budget, which is why it is before the committee the whole this evening. I am comfortable with having it in the executive budget, which is why it is before the committee the whole this evening.
So um, I have a question here. Um, it appears that we, as we go through proprietary funds. That there has done an overall increase, correct, Jesse?
Correct. You'll see later on in this slideshow, the proprietary funds budget uh, is healthy. That being said, we do anticipate a um, case, a a rate case review. Um, we did plug in um, an anticipated five percent increase in rates as part of this executive budget. Because until we have a final report from the consultant that we can actually dig into as staff. We simply took a very conservative estimate as to what those new rates would look like and what that budgetary impact would be in twenty twenty five. Um, that being said, even without the uh, rate study, rather, um. The administrative assist, the utility is healthy and the administrative assistant position could be um, supported. That being said. Uh, full disclosure, again, the executive budget does program in a five percent uptick in rates. Because we do know we have a rate case study coming.
Okay, and uh, I think uh, just historically. Um, I think this goes back before you Amber and you definitely before you Breckin. We used to have somebody down there. Uh, not that the the facility was always. Open, but people would pay their bills there. Not that we're going to go back to that, but there was generally an administrative assistant there, correct?
We did. History there actually sometimes were two people that were administratively out of utility. Um, that were lower to ones, which had before my time, that position was moved to the hall. Is now sort of a position that is still at the Public Works Building. Um, there has not been somebody sitting at utilities.
Okay, and um, is it the possibility that if this is. Might be able to have um, a phone answered by somebody on the phone tree, that's something we might be able to look at.
It's answered a little time right now by Rachel in. But yes, definitely a share to me since someone has answered.
All right, that's all I have. Just uh, looking at general consensus here amongst folks. Okay.
I just feel this is a position that is definitely needed. This has gone on too long. Nobody but I'm just I'm in there and. Sometimes more often than not, Amber's, or excuse me, Breckin's one that can speak, so.
Very good. Okay, uh, so if uh, I think we can move forward. Uh, we have agreement on the staffing at this point in time. Uh, thank you all for your comment. We'll kind of stop in in and out on these just to kind of talk.
Sure.
So Jesse, you can move forward.
Sure. Uh, just an overview of the general fund. As I mentioned, this is the largest program area within our budget. We are um, programming a seven and three quarter percent increase. However, we do have a slight. Uh, reduction in the tax levy allocation to support the general fund. Um, again, primarily based upon um, permit and earnings revenues. That being said, in general, we've got some of the larger allocations within the general fund. We've got a two percent cost of living wage adjustment for nonrepresented staff. We've got rage wage reserve for the uh, program for the collective bargaining results. This can be found in the unclassified. Uh, program area of your budget under the general fund. Benefit costs were absolutely a significant driver of the general fund uh, increase. Um, uh, uh, insurance uh, premiums have gone up and that said, we adjusted accordingly. Um, that said, the state health plan, we are definitely seeing the advantages of that. Um, uh, being part of that larger entity, so to speak, versus some of the self-insured numbers that I've heard come in. Um, so nonetheless, we still see a benefit uh, increase. We're also programming funds for to address the contractual increases, software licenses, upticks in those. Um, software support, upticks in that, garbage and recycling, we're contractually bound to um, upticks in that service. Not only just through um, uh, general market conditions, but also just because there's more stops. As we grow as a village, there's more stops and therefore the fees uptick. All of the contractual increases are addressed within the general fund. Um, we also have programmed the historical transfers into the recreation and aquatics funds. Those are two special revenue funds. That are um, supported by tax levy transfers from the general fund. Into those two special revenue funds, just to help offset some of their operational costs. With that, um, in the general fund, we have. Um, allocation for a large micro-surfacing project and remarking of a stretch of road from. Uh, Beach Street down to First Avenue. This would be along Wisconsin. Uh, this is a significant departure from the. Borrow funds completely reconstruct roads. Um, type of approach to our road program. We're looking at about one point two miles here of. It a micro-surfacing technology that has been used in neighborhoods. This will be uh, one of the first on a major thoroughfare, which will extend the life between seven to ten, possibly up to twelve years. And then remarking that entire stretch of um, thoroughfare as well. Um, also two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars worth of bridge repairs. Um, are also uh, programmed as part of the uh. Uh, project. We do have programmed fund balance, um, approximately half of our programs. This is a historical practice by the village of Grafton. In that it maintains our expenditure restraint um, threshold at a higher level. Despite the fact, we never intend to use it. We've actually grown fund balance over the last handful of years. Um, and that said, we are sitting very healthy uh, fund balance. Our policy states we need to maintain. A minimum of twenty-five percent of general fund operations in reserve. We are sitting at about thirty percent after this allocation of programmed fund balance. About half of that is scheduled for special one-time projects. The other half is unassigned and for emergency use only. To dig into that a little bit deeper, here are the programmed specific uses. Um, working uh, from uh. Right back to left, kind of backwards across the page. As I mentioned, there is. Half of that is unassigned. This is a common practice for the village of Grafton over the years. Really, it's in case of emergency break glass. This is a uh, contingency fund. It is not designated for use. But again, it serves a purpose as in case of emergency, we're able to uh, out utilize. But more importantly, it actually helps establish a higher expenditure restraint program threshold. We also have three specific one-time special projects, uh, the bridge repairs of two hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Those are the expansion joints of um, the Highway sixty bridge and the Bridge Street Bridge, as I recall correctly. Falls Road, thank you. Um, so those two bridges. But then also a comprehensive land use plan update. This would, this uh, allocation would look to bring in an outside consultant. Um, um, help facilitate public um, input through various um. Uh, open houses, public hearings, what have you, to take a long, hard look and deep dive into our comprehensive land use plan here in the village. And help guide future development and then carry out that update and in accord with requirements set forth by the state. Last but not least, I have an allocation uh, in the, under the programmed fund balance. For an outside consultant to come in and carry out a classification and compensation study of our nonrepresented workforce. We want to make sure as an employer that we remain um, um, competitive within the marketplace. What this project would do would be to take a look at our job descriptions. Where those various job positions, based upon the job descriptions, are placed within our pay structure. And then also bring forward recommendations for any changes, but also an implementation plan. The last thing I want to do here is create a, have a study done. And create a document that sits on a shelf. So it is a multi-pronged uh, project. That I believe is vastly important for us as an organization, that we have an outside independent party come in. With resources to be able to research market conditions and align our existing job positions. And our salary structure with the marketplace and provide recommendations and an action plan. So those are the three um, programmed uses of fund balance. And then, yes, the remainder is unassigned again. Uh, in accord with past practice. Taking a look, as I mentioned, we have a fund balance policy compliance, uh, of. And we are in, well in compliance. For the twenty twenty-five executive budget, that blue line would be the threshold of the two point eight six million dollars. We actually currently sit at the four point one eight million dollar uh, benchmark. So we're again, with the programming of the fund balance in the executive budget, part of it assigned. Most of it not assigned. We are still sitting at a thirty percent um, threshold. And well in compliance of the adopted policy. Moving uh, into our special revenue funds, unless there were any questions about uh, the the programming of fund balance.
Jesse, so under the compensation study. Uh, seeing as how the fire department employees will still be technically under the village umbrella.
They would not be included. Nope, that is all under the authority of the Ozaki Central Fire Department Board. That is not the village. Absolutely. Special revenue funds. We are seeing a significant increase here, and that is because the referendum levy coming into the fire protection and rescue. Um, fund. Park and open space, we are seeing a major, uh, uh, a significant amount of park improvement projects. The Meadowview Meadowview play structure uh, replacement project, um, re-roofing the Zon Pavilion. We will not, the executive budget does not include the replacement of the um, Lime Kiln Park play structure. The reason for that is we had to balance resources within this fund and we felt it more important. Or my budget calls for a allocation towards the Zon Pavilion roof replacement to protect a revenue driver. We will continue to monitor the playground and make repairs and or close it accordingly if need be at Lime Kiln. But we do believe that is structurally sound enough and safe enough to make one more year. And then we will pro, we'll be programming that in the uh, twenty twenty-six. So that was the prioritization there within the um, executive budget. We will be uh, recaucking the uh, pool and the area around the pool. Um, and we will be starting a park sign replacement program. Uh, park and recreational facilities, this is uh, our impact fee, um, pro uh, funded uh, special revenue fund. We are looking at Black Hawk Valley Trail Connection. This would uh, connect the trail that's existing in Black Hawk Valley. Up to uh, the Blue Stem subdivision. Library, uh, as you know, there's been a lot covered within the local media about um, the library and how the budget may. May or may not be impacted by the town of Grafton's um, action to withdraw from the intergovernmental agreement. That said, overall, the library is coming forward with a slightly reduced budget. Um, kudos to um, uh, Director Klopman and the library board for taking a look at their operations. Their staffing levels and scheduling and coming in with a slightly reduced budget. That being said. The tax levy support from the village is increasing slightly by about ten thousand dollars. To ensure that the appropriate level of funding is there and available for the library to continue operations. We are utilizing the remainder of the federal ARPA funds, Lime Kiln Park. We are hoping to do that this year. Um, we are working with Ozaki County on that project. Ozaki County is not able to fit that in, therefore, we will look to do that next year. If Ozaki County cannot get to us in a timely manner. To handle that project, we would bring in an outside consultant. Utilizing the last remaining Ozaki County ARPA funds, the remaining balance will be applied towards Ozaki Central Fire Department staffing. Then to move this toolbar quickly, the remaining. The remaining in um, special revenue funds are either status quo or have minimal changes associated with them being. Room tax revolving loan, Woodlawn Cemetery Capital, Recreation Aquatics and the Environmental Fund.
Uh, just a quick uh, uh, chat with everybody here, um, again, uh. We're looking at, you know, they they question. Um, again, I think that uh, we want to have a very effective library. We continue to work towards. What the library is going to look like after the public is all. Um, I think. Consensus here, we're all okay with this or are there some questions that are all there? Yes, it good.
Sure. So, um. I find it interesting that we've given them an extra ten thousand dollars. They have saved money, but I think probably they've saved uh, their money by. Cutting down, um, I think maybe maybe point five F T E, Jesse? And also they had some retirements, so I feel like they've saved money that way with having some people start. Yeah, save money on um, salaries that way. Um, but the ten thousand dollar increase uh, from tax levy support. I I have a problem with because they did get a huge donation and they were able to roll that into library donor fund. They have an extra three quarters of a million dollars to work with. I wish that we could take a little bit of that money that we've given them more than they had last year. In tax levy support, and I wish we could roll some of that over to the aquatic center. Because I feel like Chad is stuck with that area that used to be a splash pad. And it would be great knowing that especially the library has this extra money. I think that's so needed if over at the aquatic center chat. And whether it's we cut this budget for the library by twenty thousand dollars, it's a start. Um. I don't agree that they have this extra amount of money in their tax levy support when other departments, their tax levy support was cut. I don't know if you guys feel about the splash pad as something that we don't, we've been talking about for years. We have all these um, building nice and, you know. Um, parks, when the new developments come into play and a lot of people, I think, swim at the pool. And certainly, you know, we did some updates there, but I feel like. You know, we're just struggling over here. And I think this splash pad would really be great for you. If Chad and I know how you feel about that. No, 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 I'm not saying it would just be ten thousand dollars. I'm not saying we would cut by ten thousand dollars. You know, some departments get their tax levy support cut by quite a bit. There you can see with the fire department in the past, it's gone up and down. That would be a start.
The spot you're talking about, what's going forward, so for us to create splash pad, it would, it would, it would take a lot of effort and work there. Another thing that is probably is more dire need is the building itself. The the uh, bath house, I call it. That structure is in most need of repair. If you look at the base. Fully, not slowly, but moderately, it's deteriorating.
Yeah.
Things like that. Also part of that building, also is the, is the walls. As well, that is still good in an attack, but there's bigger things that the pool would be.
Yeah, I I have to, you know, as we go through the budget, is this, was this any part of the uh, requested budget?
No, it was not.
No, it it it, and I knew it wasn't. I'm just trying to look.
And Lisa, what I, what I really want to say is I want to keep us kind of tucked into what was in the budget and is in the budget. I think if we look that the this group, um, you know, clearly does not want to, this group is in consensus. To not um, share under ten thousand or uh, to take ten thousand dollars levy off of that. I'm sure there's a, a way that we could redirect that. However, Jesse, they came to us with their budget.
They did. Correct. This is the budget coming to us from the uh, library board. And the village board's authority is to say yea or nay to the amount of tax levy support. That being said, we do need to be cognizant of the maintenance of effort uh, calculations, which I don't have in front of me. Because we cannot dip below a minimum amount as set by a formula through the state. But again, I don't have that in front of me. So I do not know whether or not the ten thousand dollars would make or break that formula. I can't speak to that.
Lisa, your, your suggestion here is um, to uh, not provide them with ten thousand dollars in the piece, correct?
Not only not to provide them with ten thousand, but possibly, you know, their amount last year that they received was, well, it was six seventy. And they're asking for six eighty. Um, the year before, six fifty-nine, year before, five fifty-eight. I mean, again, in light of this big donation, call it a donation, call it an ARPA type of um. You know, donation with the fire department. I mean, I I I think that we should consider more than ten thousand dollars. And it could be redirected somewhere else. Maybe it could help Chad in the, in the bath house.
So I will ask uh, folks here, um, is that something that you would like to change to the budget?
I would be agreeing with that.
I would be.
Yes.
I I'm not.
Not agreement, okay. Um, yes, so and and I'm, um, you know what, I'm not in agreement with it, but I I would honor the um, consensus of the board. So I think consensus here is uh, reasonable by my own ability. I do think that we need to look at too is that funding that did come in, at least the one that did the large donation. Is that restricted in any way that we know?
I believe it is restricted, but also you do not want to use one-time funds for day-to-day operations. So that's, that's another part of the equation here. Yes, there is a slight increase in uh, tax levy, but that would be applied to the day-to-day operations. The, the donation would go towards special one-time projects.
Did the rest of the board agree with, just ten thousand dollars? Or do you think that we could come down to maybe twenty twenty-three, which was basically six sixty thousand, so it would be twenty thousand. Cause that money could be used like for some other department. That, you know, it's it's a savings. And the library did get that.
I would be on board with that as long as they can financially, it ends me. And it works, absolutely.
Okay, so we have two, three, no, one, not four, or four.
I would be agree, you know, agree to.
I'm pulling up. And I'll, I'll give you an answer. So there you go. Okay.
So just to make sure I'm understanding the direction and the consensus of the Village Board, the library's special revenue fund would be decreased amount of tax levy allocation by $20,000. Okay, very good.
I want to say thank you for having the Black Hawk Valley Trail Project completed for this. That was promised in many, many years, I think, so. Would I speak to them? Please take that and have kind of a understanding of the magnitude and its nature. Because that was, too, like, really, right? Is that something that, like, a surprise?
Work in the second utility team, three years ago. Just in this year's inspection, like a month ago, so we added in some additional work up in this year's inspection, so we should just quickly get out there one time, keep their health.
Thank you.
Okay, just also, just Chad, I want to reiterate what I did today at staff meeting. I can tell you that I've had more positive comments about the park and the park park maintenance and park operation and the rect program with your numbers has been fantastic. So thank you very much. It's a great investment. All right, anything else on this? Just to inform everybody here, we're going to keep rolling on this until probably 6:30-ish before we start the Village Board meeting. So if you're here for the Village Board meeting, we're going to make sure that we continue talking about our executive program. Jesse, take her away.
Absolutely. Our debt service fund, the village has retained its AA2 bond rating, one of the highest in the states for communities of our size. That said, overall debt service, as it continues to mature, is up $147,000. That said, the tax levy allocation is only increased by $25,000 because there's TID-related debt that is mixed in here. That said, again, as I mentioned prior, the 2025 executive budget does not call for any tax levy related debt or funded debt, rather. With that, moving my toolbar here, the village is carrying approximately 30% of its allowable debt per state law. So again, we are in great shape. Not, not to call out others, but as recent newspaper articles have called out, there are other nearby communities that are closer to 90-plus percent of their allowable debt that they're carrying. So long and short of it is, we have plenty of debt capacity, but the 2025 budget does not call for any tax levy funded debt. However, as I mentioned, due to various capital projects that have been programmed in the CIP as well as a much-needed force main and road repair, we are looking at a $1.75 million utility debt service that is programmed into the 2025 budget. This is not funded by tax levy. This is all part of the proprietary fund budget.
Oh, everybody understands that, part of the proprietary fund. Because I know last year, there was a lot of discussion about debt for roads, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We have borrowed quite frequently for utility, utility programs.
As well, yes.
Major projects are.
Correct, like the Headworks Building, that'd be a good example. Yep, that's debt service carried by the utility. All right, capital equipment and projects, a quick summary of that. The five-year road ratings, 2023 was our last year. They will be carried out in 2025 as an every other year project. That said, we continue to rise, and we are going to see road improvements as part of the 2025 executive budget. What we're looking at as far as projects and equipment that are programmed, traffic signals at Porton Falls Road, there's about a $245,000 cost share on behalf of the village. The other portions are town and nearby developments. Road design allocation, we are looking to allocate funds to do some design and engineering work on segments of road that have been identified in the capital improvement plan. What this will do is get us ahead of the game with regards to having shovel-ready plans to be able to bid out at frankly, our convenience and at the best time of the marketplace. So hopefully that translates into better bidding results and getting more bang for our buck. The police fleet program that continues, the firing range renovation project was carried over from 2024 as just with the locker room project and whatnot. They were not able to handle both projects, therefore the firing range is carried over, as is the purchase of the masonry truck for the Public Works Department. The drone is programmed for equipment purchase for the police department. There is the standard equipment allocation being vests, shields, the tasers program, as well as in-squad equipment. The street sweeper financing program continues, and then an articulating loader. There are the computer replacements for the village's whole, but also, as discussed during the CIP, we do include in the executive budget an allocation for electronic poll books, i.e. Badger Books. This is a follow-up to the informational presentation provided by Clerk Olson. And that said, it does remain in the executive budget, subject to, all of these are subject to the purview of the Village Board.
And just a quick slide again, I won't talk to any concerns or questions that Village Board members may have on these items. I'll start articulating loader, Amber. Is this a big one or a little one?
It is a bigger one to replace the small one, because we currently have a larger one and a smaller one. We are having issues with small ones depending on color and.
Got this. So it would be more like the first green one, correct? Thank you. Anyone else have questions? All right, I'm set up here. Lisa?
So I wanted to ask you about road reconstruction, Jesse. I know that we're doing the micro-surfacing.
If, if you can hold that question, I got a slide coming up that's going to walk through the road program as a whole. It'll give a summary because our road program, as it's plugged into the executive budget, is part general fund, part utility. So it, it's found in different places throughout the budget, and I've got a slide coming up that'll summarize the entire thing.
My question, how it is incorporated into the utility?
Yes. Absolutely.
So questions on this?
All right. The proprietary funds, the wastewater and water utilities, they both are programmed to show a net income, revenues over expenses. That said, as I mentioned previously, these budgetary figures do incorporate an estimated 5% adjustment to the, both the water and sewer wastewater rates. We do anticipate a case study coming forward. We don't have a final report. And that we've been able to dig into to the point of being able to present to the decision-makers as far as how to move forward or if to move forward. That being said, we needed to plug in some sort of adjustment. So a very conservative estimate on behalf of staff for the purposes of crafting the 2025 budget, these do include a 5% lift as far as rate adjustment. Other utility highlights, this would be the capital portion of the utility budget. Water meter changeout, that ongoing program does continue. There's about $225,000 allocated to that as we look to wrap that up. The wastewater treatment plant approval, improvements, lift station upgrades, the equipment purchases, including a replacement truck, an excavator, and a, the, the jet truck financing, as previously mentioned. But then the force main repair and the overlying road. And that is part of the road program, which I'll be able to get into in just a second here. So that is, those are the capital highlights for the water and wastewater utility.
And the lift, lift updates on the night of the left are helping us with the new construction areas along, proposed construction area.
Correct. It's all part of the infrastructure upgrades needed to get all the stuff from point A to point B.
Amber, will the water meter changeouts be completed in 2025 or directly?
Sure. What kind of condition is Falls Road or Falls Street?
Can you hold that question? I'm going to get there. Nope, and here it is, actually, our next slide, the road program. Here is the summary of our road program. As I mentioned, there is an allocation in the capital fund for proactive design and engineering, again, to get us ahead and have those shovel-ready plans for future bidding. That is the small portion of our road program. The secondary portion of our road program is the falls and Port Washington Road traffic signals. Overall cost coming in about $450,000, possibly better. There's a $245,000 village cost share that is found in the capital fund. And that is the installation of not only the traffic signals, but also road improvements such as turn lanes and whatnot, and the markings that are associated with that. Now, here we get into the really meat and potatoes of the road program. As I mentioned, I'm proposing in the general fund, tax levy allocation of about $252,000 to overlay or micro-surface Wisconsin Avenue from Beach to First, about 1.2 miles of road. This will improve the road quality and extend the life of this major thoroughfare by seven to 10 years, if, if not more. But also in that project costs are the remarkings. Interesting enough, the, the remarkings, the, the crosswalks, the, the center lanes, the, the turn lanes, what have you, that is actually a significant part of that overall project cost. But nonetheless, 1.2 miles of road improvement through micro-surfacing of that thoroughfare. Now we're getting to Falls Street. This is an immediate need. We were working, as the budget was coming together, we were working off of the approved capital improvement plan. As identified, the road segments identified earlier this spring. Every year, the village televises its sanitary sewer mains. Half of the village is televised, where a camera is literally sent down the pipes to verify their condition. This was identified on Falls Street. This is a force main, so this main carries flow, sanitary sewer flow from east of the river, over the river, down Falls Street to the treatment plant. What that red arrow is pointing at is the fact that, that is one section of this pipe that doesn't have a top to it. Inside of these concrete pipes, the sewer gas actually corrodes the cement pipe over time, the concrete pipe over time. That is a portion of this pipe that frankly, doesn't have a top to it. So this immediate need was identified because if that fails, not only does the pipe come down on itself, clog up, create backups, but also the road above it could potentially fall in as well, and thus impacting travel in that area, residential access and so forth. But I think most importantly, if that pipe fails, that is a huge service pipe from east of the river directly to the treatment plant that would back up amongst residents. So that is a significant amount of debt service called for by the utility to not only relay the pipe, but also the rebuilding of the road above it. That's about 0.48 miles. So all told, we're looking at about 1.7 miles of road getting improved through the course of these projects. So we're, you know, hitting that target, so to speak, of road improvement without tax levy-supported debt. But it will call for utility debt because this needs to be done because of the condition of that force main.
Amber, do you know what the quality of that road is, the rating of that section? Because I'm trying to figure out, if we didn't discover this, where would that have been on the road replacement program?
Falls Street specifically is not in the road program. A lot of the neighborhood streets on Brown there are. I don't remember the specific number. I'm going to guess it is a 2.3. It's not in very good.
Okay, so that may have been coming up on your list of projects to do. So wouldn't, wouldn't the right thing to do is to share the cost of this project with, you know, because right now the utility is picking up the burden of the whole project, even though the role at some point coming up soon would have been on TPW, right?
But I think we, we have, we have somewhere around billion per mile.
Ish, and the, the, you know, rough estimate.
Sure, sure. So, so we do, it looks good that we're doing the resurfacing for 252. We may have had to do another 500,000 if we had done their vote next year or something. We didn't discover the utility issue.
And, and I think we all would like to, I mean, we all would love to have great roads. I mean, there's no doubt about that. I mean, we both, we drive over some of our favorite roads and go like, wow, this is a rough road. But we're really no different than a lot of other communities out there. They have the same problem, feeling the fact that we just, I got a little bit of a problem. And again, I wouldn't think, given what you've done here, that in case that we have last year of, you know, financing and financing more road repair. I don't think that that, we didn't think that that would.
Nope, frankly, that is the, the informal guidance that I took and part of the thought process here of crafting this plan to address the road program in 2025 is to avoid levy-supported borrowing while still providing enough levy to do other projects and, and keep us ahead of the game as much as we can. Yes.
The water, the utility department paying for doing that.
Yes, it would be a utility project, correct? Yep.
Thank you, Lisa, for being patient with us.
I told you I had a slide.
Does that include any underlying improvements at all to the road as far as patching before that's done? Or is it, is the road just considered in a good enough condition to do it?
It's in good enough condition there. RC5 is starting to get a little bit rough, but the ideal is to get that colored out to the underlying.
So there'd be no removal at all, like the, like the areas where? It's either colored concrete or colored asphalt where the, you know, the crosswalks.
Yes, we skip the red crosswalks. So those would say red concrete.
And that's concrete.
Yes. We would, we would skip over those.
Thank goodness we still have the red concrete. Jesse, take a little way.
All right, TIF districts are actually fairly status quo. The village has four active TIF districts. Three, four, and five are, in essence, the, the really actual active ones, so to speak. TIF six is brand new. That is the Foundry Tax Incremental Financing District. Collection of the increment begins with the 2026 budget. So yes, that's shown in the book. There is very little and no activity because the increment coming into it doesn't hit until our next budget. That said, we do have the historical borrowing or lending between the TIFs. As far as TIF five has been very successful, that is the East Side Tax Incremental Financing District, which helps offset the debt service in Tax Incremental Financing District three, which is the downtown. That said, closure dates range between 2027 and 2033, if not sooner. That is for TIFs three, four, and five. TIF six obviously is well out there as that is brand new. That carries about a 20 to 25-year life. So again, TIFs are pretty status quo, no big projects there. All right, what does this all mean? This really translates to an overall village tax levy of about $10.5 million, a 1.6, $1.6 million or 18.2% increase from last year. Where does that increase come from? 91% of that levy adjustment is from the fire and EMS referendum. The other 9% of that levy adjustment is from the net new construction valuation. As you recall, under state law, the village can adjust its tax levy either 0% or by the net new construction valuation. And yes, we've seen quite a bit of single-family home construction, which is great. But individual, single-family homes don't carry a lot of weight when adding to the valuation of the Village of Grafton, as the Village of Grafton is overall valuation over $1 billion. Hence why we see what Paul said, over $2 billion. Thank you. So again, the, the net new construction valuation, yes, we're seeing a lot of single-family homes. That doesn't carry a lot of weight when adding, being able to adjust the tax levy. So that is the breakdown of how we arrive at the new levy. What does that mean with regards to transitioning that levy and calculating what it means for a tax rate? So to achieve the collection of that levy, including the fire and EMS referendum and the net new construction valuation, we're looking at about a $1 increase to the per thousand of value assessed tax rate. We're looking at, we'll call it $7.04 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. And I want to stress assessed valuation. The village works on assessed values, the school districts, the county, they operate on equalized valuation. Equalized property valuation is set by the state of Wisconsin. We have a local contractor here that sets our assessed rate, and that would be our assessed tax rate, which would show up on the tax bill. The school district's equalized rates show up on the tax bill. Our assessed rate shows up.
And right now, we're somewhere in that area, we'll call it 70, 80% of the assessed, the assessed value.
Correct, correct. So how does that tax rate translate to the overall, or, or the village portion of the tax bill? Let me be clear, there are multiple taxing jurisdictions that appear on the tax bill. School district, county, M A T C. There are multiple taxing jurisdictions that appear on the tax bill, school district, county, M A T C, and the village. The village's tax rate, this is the village's portion of a tax bill for an average two hundred and seventy four thousand dollar home here in Grafton. You apply the tax rate, the per thousand valuation of the property. And that here again, this nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars is the village portion of the property tax bill. Where does that all go, how does that break out? Sixty percent of that amount on the the village portion of the tax bill, sixty percent of that goes into the general fund. Those are ongoing operations being clerk's office, village board, legal, administration, finance, community development, D P W, police, and so forth. Four hundred and twenty five dollars of that village portion of the tax bill or twenty two percent goes to fire and EMS. Then we move down capital projects and equipment, hundred and forty six dollars or eight percent. Six percent towards the library, that will change with the allocation change that was. By consensus discussed earlier this evening. Debt service comes in at about three percent and park and open space one percent, now it's important to understand. Park and open spaces are also funded through impact fees and user fees, so yes, that is a lower amount of tax levy, however. There are rentals, user fees and program fees and in impact fees that go into that fund as well. Park and Recreation Administration falls under general fund, that's another reason it's split. And so that is not all encompassing of the Park and Recreation Department, that's important to know. Alright, I am pleased to say mission accomplished with this executive budget. As I mentioned at the start, there were three primary objectives here, mitigate the impact. We're looking at a dollar per thousand of a village tax rate adjustment with the fire and EMS referendum. If you backed out that fire and EMS referendum, we'd be looking at a penny on the tax rate. We held the line as much as we possibly could within the remainder of the village budget. Because again, we wanted to be responsible to the taxpayers with the establishment of this executive budget. That being said, we still support the services and amenities throughout the village through road improve improvements. That is greatly assisted by the utility as mentioned before, but road improvements are still booked and allocated for, park improvements. Infrastructure repairs, new and replacement equipment are accounted for, municipal services are maintained and or improved. Now we get to the reasonable portion. How how can I make an apples to apples comparison, this comes back to that notion of equalized valuation. Again, school districts, county, they work on an equalized tax rate, that is a tax rate set by the state of Wisconsin. To in essence, whether you're looking at a single family home here in Grafton or a single family home in Rhinelander. What what is that comparable valuation for residential or commercial use? So equalized tax rates are set by the state of Wisconsin. Grafton School District's proposed equalized tax rate with their budget that's coming up is seven dollars and nine cents per thousand. Cedarburg School District's proposed equalized tax rate with their budget that's coming up later this month is six dollars and fifty cents per thousand. The village of Grafton comes in at five dollars and thirty nine cents of equalized valuation tax rate. So long and short of it is, we are a very reasonable part of the overall tax bill. We are very cognizant of the impact of the fire and EMS referendum as well as other outside forces that have have an impact on the budget. And we are still working hard to continue the high level of municipal services as well as. Updating, continuing to update our roads and parks. While again, maintaining services and providing new and updated equipment as needed within the departments. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, Jesse, and I appreciate it. My impression here is a great shot of supporting the staff and Paul and. Just want to be able to open this up for the next twelve, thirteen minutes, see where we all stand with this. With the budget at this point in time, any questions?
None that need answered, from what you've already talked about.
Okay, very good.
Uh, no, no, I'm.
You're good, thank you, very good. Amy?
Thank you for the presentation, Jesse, it was well done, I appreciate, and I like the timeline process of the staff doing the presentation. Each other, it's great. I just have one question on page two fifty one, legal services. Under capital funding is twenty five thousand five hundred, can you just enlighten me on what that is?
As soon as I get to that page, absolutely. Let's see here, legal services. Page two fifty one. Capital projects, legal. That would be any legal representation we would need as far as the borrowing through the utility, if I recall correctly. Paul, am I off in left field on that one? Page two fifty one under the capital projects funds column. Oh, that is. Would be any legal for any of the capital project funds, which includes the tits. So this would mainly be for, or if there's any issues with tits.
One other question on page one fifty nine, charges for services.
I'm getting there, one fifty nine. Yes, charges for service, there is an uptick in the, let's see here. So that is a summary page of the special revenue funds and we're seeing charges for service. Make sure I'm looking at the right line here. An uptick there, part of that is the village of Grafton will be charging professional services out to the Ozaki Central Fire Department. We will be acting as their mechanic, if you will, for year one, we will be acting as their accountant and H R. Arm, so that is part of that uptick. Frankly, I would have to do another deeper dive as well, but that would be a, that would be a chunk of that uptick.
And one more question, on page seventeen, there's fifty thousand pages for design work. Are we going to be getting bids in twenty twenty five for the work to be done in twenty twenty six? That's all I have, thank you.
Very good.
Welcome.
Andy?
I have no questions, I think it's very responsible.
Thank you very much, every, Lisa, you have some questions?
Sure, just one, I think this is, this will be the last year that we have incorporated the fire department. Because we are giving them, they're a chunk of money for the new departments. Again, I am concerned because in the past we have, they have not necessarily kept up with net new construction. In regards to their tax revenues. And that has been changed, you know, up, up, a couple times, mostly down. So I am concerned that I don't feel there's enough money for the fire departments. I know we agreed with the referendum. In twenty twenty four, their their tax revenue portion was six hundred eighty seven thousand. It was down from twenty three, from seven, seven forty. Like twenty two, they were seven hundred and seventeen thousand. I don't think they get, or have in the past gotten the same type of bump that the other departments have had, so. I am still concerned about that going forward with our new department and the amount of taxes that we have now. Allocated to them going forward in the departments. I don't think it'll be enough.
And that would be a discussion to be had with the Ozaki Central Fire Department Board as their recommended budget is what was built into our executive budget.
And we have to talk about that in the next week.
Correct.
Okay, any further questions on this? Okay, so it appears to me that we have consensus amongst the board that we can forward on this budget. For at the meeting on November third, Jesse?
Yes, that would, that would be the scheduled public hearing, correct?
Correct, so we should see those on on the final budget.
Correct, yep, for the publication, for the public hearing, you will see those changes reflected, yes, that were discussed here this evening.
Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion in second, all in favor, say aye. We'll start here in a couple minutes, does anybody need a five minute break?